I'd like to call the Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, City Council to order, please call the roll. Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glan?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Shaker?
Here.
Alderman Peterson?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of McHenry's mission statement is as follows. The city of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services in a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. First item on the agenda this evening is public comment. No one has signed in for that purpose. Is there anyone here for that purpose? See, no one. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman candid. Is there a second? Alderman Curry?
Second.
Discussion, Alderman candid?
Nope. No questions.
Alderman Santee?
I have no questions.
Alderman Glan?
Nothing.
Alderman Shaker?
No questions.
Alderman Curry?
I have questions. They've all been answered by changes here, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to point out, this regards to item six A at your places. Tonight, this is what Alderman Curry referenced in his comment. We've made a couple modifications to the resolution for item six A. And just to clean up the language or make it a little bit more explicit in terms of what services we're talking about to the engineering firm. So Dave, did I miss something in there?
No, I suppose we had to just inform you that, so you got, the city council wanted us to go out and prepare engineering firm alternatives for the two types of projects that are referenced, and those are in there. But if it's federally funded projects that are funding engineering services, then you need to follow a different procedure, and that's all laid out in the resolution. But if for some reason the federal funds are only used for the project and not to pay for engineering services, then we'll still resort to that list.
Thank you. Any discussion, having got that said? Thank you. Please call the roll. Alderman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glan?
Yes.
Alderman Shaker?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Motion Curry? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to A, approve the McHenry Area Chamber of Commerce sixty-ninth annual Fiesta Days event schedule, including the addition of Thursday, July thirteenth; B, the use of Parks and City Services; C, establish that the McHenry Area Chamber of Commerce will reimburse the city at a rate of one hundred percent of manpower costs for Thursday, July thirteenth; and D, to approve the specialty event liquor license; and three, approve placement of temporary advertising signs as presented. Looking for a motion on this item. Alderman Shaker?
I'll make the motion as with all the items that you just presented.
Thank you. Alderman Santee, second?
I will second the motion.
Before we have discussion, do any of you want to make a comment?
Please.
Okay, Danny?
Thank you again for giving us your time. We know how important the Fiesta Days is in the community and, you know, bringing people together. That's why we, you know, five Fiesta Days was started in the first place. McHenry area chamber's goals for Fiesta Days is to make it even more valuable to our residents and the local businesses that support this event. Aside from Thursday night, the Fiesta Day schedule will pretty much remain the same as it has in the past. Fiesta Days is essential, or Thursday night on Fiesta Days is essential for us to move forward with it financially. We need it to fund someone better invest. First of all, Thursday night is important to us to draw higher quality amusements and better food vendors. The key issue here is revenue. Unfortunately, with just having two nights really to raise money, we need that third night to attract that better amusement and food vendors, something that residents have been talking to us about for years. Fiesta Days' first weekend, Music Fest weekend, funds everything else that Fiesta Days does. We fund the parade, the ice cream social, all the advertising that is produced by Fiesta Days, and all the other people that are marketing along with us. We take care of that through that Music Fest weekend. Fiesta Days is the only fest in the area that kicks off on Friday night. A lot of the other communities around us are running all four nights, which, not Woodstock, but Crystal Lake, Algonquin, Lake of the Hills, all start on Thursday night. And a lot of our residents' dollars are going there, they're going to those other fests. So we want to keep everybody at home, okay? Fiesta Days is also looking to attract and serve the millennials, the twenty-one, the thirty-six group. I think this is what our Thursday night is going to be geared towards. We want to try to get some of the younger crowd out there, who supplies good opportunity for the businesses in this area that are attracted to that age group, the demographic. As you know, past few years, weather has a big impact on Fiesta Days. We only have the two nights really to raise the money. One or two bad nights can severely impact the financial health of the chamber. And Chamber uses these funds to keep the membership dues low and all the business activities and gatherings that we do keeps those costs down as well. As a committee, as a group, none of us got together and said, hey, Thursday night, another night to volunteer. But we know how important it is for Fiesta Days to have another night, an additional night. And I'd like to ask Jeff Pittman to come up too. He's got a couple things he wants to say.
Thank you. Good evening, guys. If you don't know me, I'm Jeff Pittman, I'm a pastor in the area, but I'm also a resident. I'm a transplant to McHenry, but it's home for us, for my family, my four little girls. But four years ago, we started this Family Fun Day on a Sunday morning of Fiesta Days. And the point of it was to broaden the appeal the first weekend of Fiesta Days, to give it more of a family-friendly approach to that. In the last four years, we've seen it really be successful in many different ways of just bringing some families out to there. But there have been some critiques and some obstacles to overcome, things we've heard. And one of those, I actually witnessed myself, it was two summers, two summers ago, when we had a very hot Sunday. And so I took a trip away from Fiesta Days to get a sprinkler, to get us, the kids kind of cool down in the Family Fun Day. And as I'm going over railroad tracks to go to my car to get a sprinkler, I noticed the buzz that is happening on the outside of railroad tracks that appears in part with the car show. And there's a lot of people over there, there's kids, there's parents, there's grandparents all enjoying the car show there. And there's some people at the carnival as well, but they weren't coming over the railroad tracks to come to where we were. And when you start asking around, and I have some people from our congregation, people I know who are there, and start asking the questions there, it's the mission, it's the cost of actually getting over the road tracks to be part of our section of Fiesta Days. And I ask more questions to young families in our area, they'll share the same stories. In fact, I was talking to one family this week, and they're sharing that last year they wanted to bring in their two kids, but with them, their mom and dad, and the grandparents who wanted to bring, it's twenty dollars to get in there, and it's just something they weren't willing to do. And so we have a barrier of bringing families into experience what we've been doing for Family Fun Day. Now, how that translates into Thursday is by having a Thursday night as part of Fiesta Days, we can make Sunday fully free, where we don't have to charge anything for adults. Right now, kids are always free on Sundays, but we can make Sunday free, and we can ramp up the family aspect of Fiesta Days on the first weekend, which we're really excited about offering. The second thing I hear a lot about, and I'm sure you have two, is the amusements, is the little caliber of it, and there's opportunity we have to have on Thursday just to have a better quality amusements. I mostly hear it from people saying, I will never send my kid on that ride. Or, a lot of amusements are for junior high, high school students, things like that. And parents that I talk to just don't want to send their kid to that carnival or that area that I like. But there's some great amusement companies out there, but a big part of that is actually having more, how much more time, more space for that. So Thursday nights allows us to get a better quality amusement ride as well. Now lastly, I actually get to call myself a millennial by two days. Two days I'm a millennial. So I'm a very old millennial. But a lot of our young families in our community are fit that way. And as I ask them about the music selection at Fiesta Days, I typically get the answer of, it's fine, but it's not my music. It's not my music. And so as we look to the future of Fiesta Days, specifically Music Fest, we want to start preparing for a time where we have to transition generations. And Thursday night, when we get to focus on millennials, we get to build an audience, build a crowd that's going to come to Fiesta Days, experience a great music event there. And then in ten years, when we need to make a switch, there'll be those ones that will be on Friday or Saturday night, which have a bigger draw and a bigger band experience there. And so there's a lot of great reasons for Thursday, but just with every change, there's some challenges to overcome as well. And so one of those is cost, and actually there's cost to the chamber, cost to the city in aspects of putting on Thursday. If you set, look in your packet, the cost for Thursday night is being picked up, at least the manpower for it is a hundred percent from the chamber. So trying to address that issue of a cost of that as well. We also understand there's neighbors, and there's neighborhoods within distance there you can hear the impact of a Thursday night. We were just talking last week with the committee, our openness to actually move it from eleven o'clock, which was in the packet, to ten thirty, that would help ease any concerns I would have for this noise. And then considering the park on Thursday nights, which has been a great event for our city for a long time, there's been a conflict there. I think some of the demographics wouldn't be necessarily as much of a difference, or competing against each other as much, and it's one time thing this summer. So I think that's a valid concern, but something we can overcome. For me personally, as I look towards the future of Fiesta Days, being relevant and financially viable is a really important thing. And so having Thursday night puts us in a spot where we're more relevant as an event. We can prepare ourselves for the future much more, and continue to have Fiesta Days be a really good event for our whole community. Not moving forward with Fiesta Days makes it challenging, it hinders us to be as financially viable as we want to be, and to continue to put Fiesta Days on and all of the other things that supports it as we have in the past. So looking for your support, and are open for any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Bill, did you want to add anything?
I think they said it very succinctly, so we would have that.
All right. Alderman Shaker, was your motion?
I had a few questions and a couple of concerns. The, going back to Thursday, the, what type of entertainment were you thinking, I mean, do you have any ideas, what were you thinking about?
Yeah, we're going to try to keep it local and geared more towards that millennial group, you know, so it, we're not exactly sure. I mean, it's a little bit more difficult to find acts, but once we know that, that's where we're going to pursue a local act. In fact, right now, as the schedule's laid out, it's mostly local acts.
And what would the, what are you looking at for a cost, entry cost on a Thursday night?
I think we're probably going to keep it pretty inexpensive, right around five dollars. A lot of that depends on the act we did, but again, once we keep it local, it'll be pretty inexpensive.
And then the second question regarding that is probably for you, Bill. The, when it says, like, a hundred percent of manpower cost, what are we talking, all areas or just that day, or how do you?
It would be all areas. And when I say all areas, that's primarily the police, which we, again, will adjust according to the people that are in it. The numbers that are in the packet are based on our Friday night attendance, so it could be slightly less than that. We do typically have two shifts, seasonal help that are out there to make sure that the bathrooms are manned, and the issues, you know, when we have that large a crowd, we're not set up to be able to handle that volume of people. So we occasionally have to shut those down, and we handle that with the city staff, our park seasonal employees. So that's, when I talk about employee costs, it's always cost.
I just want to clarify something, because I think your question was, is he only talking about Thursday?
Yeah.
Correct?
Just for Thursday, a hundred percent.
Okay, because you had said, or everything, and you said yes.
So Thursday night, but then, are we reimbursed for, at all, for the other nights? What is that?
Yes, yes, we are. That cost structure that's in place, the fifty percent, we invoice the chamber for that entire amount, and then they separate that payment to us. But that Thursday, excuse me, I'm sorry, I just spoke, Thursday night would be the only night that, as it's proposed here, would be a hundred percent. The rest would be as it stands right now, the fifty percent cost.
And that does include Public Works, whatever other departments that would be required? Okay. And then another question for, you guys talked about improving the carnival, which I'm all for, but in the schedule, why would you change the vendor for Monday night when it's teen night? It shows a different amusement vendor.
I don't know, I can't speak to that. I think we've covered on that, so.
I think we gave you.
I think it's a misrepresentation. Yeah, Monday night's got a different carnival vendor.
It's going to be North American Midway for all those four nights.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
You better, yes. That is correct. Five nights on the limit.
Yeah, it shows Great American on Monday.
That is incorrect. It should say North American Midway. And I think the form that we sent out to you is the corrected form, okay? That's why you got that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then my only other concern with, and I don't think it's a big concern, but the Thursday night event that is in Vets Park, again, that's those event, that event is near and dear to a lot of people. Again, that's a free event, and I see what you're trying to do, and I hope that it doesn't, I mean, it's going to entail some families maybe breaking up and going to different spots, but I don't see it as being a deal breaker, but I am very interested in seeing your numbers from that Thursday night. And I don't recall, do you break that stuff out or just give us a total? Because I'd like to see Thursday broke out.
Well, I mean, we'd be happy to address that when the time comes, and, you know, we're very aware of the concert at Veterans Park, and again, we're trying to skew to a completely different demographic and try to go to a younger crowd. And we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, we're going to try to, you know, ease into this, we're not going to try to do anything crazy. We want to take it subtle and be good neighbors, and, you know, just break into it a little bit. It really does, you know, one of the biggest things has been free Sunday and carnival. Those are two things that we hear over and over again, and for us to be able to do that, we don't want to charge Sunday, but we need to do that to recover our costs. If we could have a Thursday night, we could do what we've always wanted to do and give a free Sunday, and let families in. And that's going to help a lot of people, but it's going to help our food vendors, you know, if we try to keep as many of them as local we can, because they get that extra day, and maybe some of those people that are at the car show will come across the tracks because they don't have to pay to get in, and they'll pay, you know, they'll have lunch at one of our vendors, and that'll just help us attract higher quality of food vendors, as we've talked about, you know, repeatedly about the better amusements, you know, all stuff that's really important for the community. We want to make this a marquee event in this area.
Thank you, I think it is. Thanks.
Alderman Curry?
Yes, first of all, it is a marquee event, and it's, I think, one of the best, if not the best in the entire area. So I think the city certainly wants to continue to support the chamber in everything to do with this event. Just for clarification, so the motion that stands is going to be for a ten-thirty closure on Thursday? Because it's different than what's in the packet.
Correct, I was going to bring that up at the end.
Because it's been, yeah.
Right. Because in the packet that we're given, and in the motion then that stands, it says eleven o'clock.
We're happy to adjust, you know, we don't have any problem with that. If we need to pull it back to ten-thirty, we're happy to do that. So we're interested in being good neighbors.
That would be, it's your motion, Alderman Shaker.
Um.
Do you want to wait until the end, or?
Yeah, I want to hear what the rest of the discussion is, please.
Alderman Curry?
Just one other comment from my standpoint, you know, the motion also includes this item C, which is the hundred percent manpower cost, which has just been discussed. I would actually like to see us just stick with the fifty percent. We're only talking about fifteen, fifty, I believe, based on the information in the packet. And, you know, the rest of it's a fifty percent reimbursement. And again, just in the spirit of supporting the event, I would just, to me, it would just be fine to keep it the same all the way through. That's my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Peterson?
Yeah, but a good idea. I was thinking that same thing myself, but, you know, but I would endorse that myself. And I like the closing at ten-thirty, because that's Ward Six back there, and we do have residents that do complain about some of the noise and things, especially on a weeknight. Would be better to be out of there by ten-thirty.
Okay. Alderman Kevin?
Several comments. So I was going to ask too, so for clarification, the only difference in the motion and what's being presented is the time change going on Thursday from ten-thirty, from eleven to ten-thirty. Discussion is, continues on whether it's a hundred percent or fifty percent covered cost. And I don't know if it's in the original, I've read too many things, if it's, if it's even relevant to us, but that Sunday will be a free event. So those are the three major things that I see that's coming to us tonight, correct? But the only motion change that we would have to address potentially is the timing of closing on Thursday and the covered costs.
Correct.
Covered costs, okay. That said, I think so often that between the two entities, the city and the chamber, I hear comments like us against them, or, you know, but really, I think there's been such a great collaboration that I hope we always continue, because what's good for the city is helping our residents and our businesses, and what's good for the chamber is helping our residents that helps our businesses. So they really are interlocked, there is, it's a great partnership. That said, I do think that the city always has to be cautious about funding, because as a chamber, your goal is to raise some money to help businesses, and in full disclosure, I am one of those. But as an Alderman, I have to be very cautious and careful about making sure the funding of our residents is protected. So the, you know, I'm, I think it's very gracious and magnanimous. I think Thursday, adding that Thursday, for the reasons that were presented by both of you, make Thursday a smart move for the city. I guess I would like to hear, I don't know if staff even has an idea, or especially Chief Jones, on what the cost would be and the impact on Thursday, but I certainly would like Thursday to be included, and I think that's wonderful that that being allowed, Thursday being allowed, we'd be able to give our, create a free event on Sunday, excuse me. So, I don't know, Chief, you can address any of that?
I'll jump in, just because, in my role of the supplement, we had, based on the numbers that we had last year, I'd include thirty-one, an estimated cost for Thursday night of thirty-one hundred dollars. That's police costs and seasonal help that we always have on in case there's an issue that we need to go to the maintenance garage or whatever that might come up. From a park perspective, we have that staff. So, and those two Cs, two college kids that are there, so it's not any great cost.
Would this require overtime for the police officers?
Yeah, all of our staff, typically, the majority of our staff at Fiesta Days are on overtime. We have our shifts being covered on the street, and, you know, we have a minimum staffing level, so we draw overtime for that. We have, for our Music Fest for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we have about two hundred and fifteen man-hours for those three days of our patrolmen, our officers.
And the thirty-one hundred dollars does include the overtime pay?
Yes, yes.
It does, okay. Well, yeah, I certainly could support the fifty percent instead of the full hundred percent, because I think that it's a benefit to our entire community. I think we have, we have community members, or previous community members that come home for that all weekend. I don't know, I think it's a win-win for everyone, so I could support fifty percent as well.
Thank you. Alderman Santee?
Question about the amusement company, they're, they would be brand new, right? Is this someone that has ever worked with the chamber before, or is this someone you were able to get because of this?
Yeah, they're far and above superior to the one we have now. And I mean, the rides are beautiful, the amount of activity out there is quite a bit warm. The carnival workers look like carnival workers. I mean, for us, nice, it's a significant improvement, so. And again, the reason we can is revenue, they just won't come out without the extra night. They can't, we can't promise them something they can't make if they're not there.
Would there be some type of, do they usually do like, on their first night, like a discount night or a special, you know, buy your tickets this night? I don't know if you've discussed with them, but.
We have it, but that's certainly something we can talk to them about and address.
Yeah.
That, I couldn't speak for the company on that, but, you know, we'd be willing to talk to them.
What was the normal fee on Sundays?
Five dollars.
What's? And how many years have we been doing fifty-fifty cost? Twelve, thirteen?
Yeah, twenty thirteen is when we had that discussion to, you know, back then, it was just kind of some rough math, honestly, and there was a donation that was made back, but there was never a set amount. We had that significant discussion of how do we set this? You know, they're the only organization that receives this benefit of fifty thousand, because we recognize what they do over the course of ten days, and the parade, and the ice cream social, and what they bring to our community. And that's what we landed on. There's certainly some city investment that's involved there. And again, you know, we charged them fifty percent only for that first weekend. There's a significant amount of manpower that we put in to manage the parade, both from police and directing traffic. I mean, it's pretty much all hands on deck, as well as the Public Works guys that are out there, you know, after the sidewalk sales, which is not a chamber event, but it's certainly part of Fiesta Days for us McHenry people.
It's always been part of that.
But there's a manpower cost there. We don't pass any of those costs on. The only costs that they pay is that first Music Fest weekend, when there's a mission charge in place, that's what we charge them for.
Is there, Dennis, or anybody in the chamber, is there any way of knowing, you guys, I know you guys do a lot of upfront or pre-ticket purchases, pre-night purchases for the special events, is there any way of knowing what percentage we get from outside, you know, our zip code's six hundred and fifty?
It's possible, but that's really different depending on the entertainment that we have there. Because a lot of times, if you have a national act like we've had in the past, you can see pre-sales. Typically, with the local acts, the ones we've had, you won't see a lot of pre-sale, people will wait till come out, so you don't always get to see those numbers. I do know, I have talked to, a couple of us from the chamber have talked to folks out at the hotels in the area, and every year during Fiesta Days, they're full. They're at capacity. People not wanting to drive home with the national act, sometimes those will be blocks of rooms that we purchased for the acts, but they're always full.
It definitely seems to be one of the top events, when you look at a calendar in regards to drawing people from outside, you know, the city. And they do get to view what I believe is a beautiful park, the lake right there. And it's an event, it's an event that is very well-run. It's a joyful go there in the evenings, but also, I look forward to visiting on Sunday, and maybe, maybe I will get the dessert, you know, because I won't have to spend the extra five dollars to get the ticket at the start. But one more real quick question, it's either a Bill or Chief Jones question. There are others, police services out there? There are others, police services out there, I do see, where, where are they from?
Yeah, we, all communities, we have a consortium with all of, Chris Lake, Lake Nails, Woodstock, all the, we draw, we draw officers from them too. Those, those cities have to pay the cost, like if we, if we have six million, you didn't find one from other cities, their cities pay for their cost to their officer, community mechanic. We reciprocate. If Woodstock needs more officers, or Lake Nails, or a vet one, we'll send an officer there and we'll pay that cost.
So yeah, so we'll, yeah, so they'll come out, got our placement, they'll also, you know, also reciprocate, go to, go to whatever their event is.
Yeah, just as an example, for all of Fiestas Days, you know, we, we put four hundred and thirty-seven man-hours in last year, Fiestas Days. Fiestas Days is about ten percent of our overtime budget for the year.
Okay. Well, thank you, and I, if, I guess I, I'm also comfortable with this, with what other Alderman mentioned about this fifty percent in regards to the structure for that. But if we close, we're saying we're going to close at ten thirty, correct?
Well, that would have, that has to be amended.
If that's not, if that's to be amended, does, would that mean then beer sales close at ten fifteen?
Yeah, well, that's, that's another item I wanted to clarify. The request of the chamber was to extend the beer sales for all, include Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Currently, the, the ticket sales end at ten thirty and service at ten forty-five, based on the policy council adopted a couple of years ago. Request is to extend the beer service time an additional ten minutes to go to ten fifty-five. So if you go based on their request, that's also included in the motion. So if council wants to stick with the policy that we have in place for Peterson Park, then it would be a ten thirty ticket time and a ten forty-five service time for Friday, Saturday night. And as it relates to the ten thirty, if that's what council chooses to go with, it would be a ten o'clock save, ticket and a ten fifteen service time.
Okay. Well, that's, okay, that's something I'm comfortable with. I have no further questions.
Alderman Glad?
I don't really have anything else. I think it's been discussed and beaten up quite a bit. I just want to state the fact that, that let's see us going a little bit more towards family. I think that it's kind of lost its luster for quite a few years. Great to get that back in and figure your younger generations and those families are going to be supporters of your bands and everything else a few years down the road. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Glad. Okay. Alderman Schaefer?
I'll.
I'll entertain some more discussion, but just for everyone's clarification. The three things that currently are in your motion that are on the table, subject to change, are, number one, the time, which would go from, would either remain at eleven in your motion or could be amended to ten thirty. The fifty percent as opposed to the one hundred percent. And the third thing is whether or not we as a council are willing to amend our own rules to change the service times. And I have no problem with the event, I have no problem with the fifty percent. But we, we spent a lot of time deciding those times in conjunction with our chief, who is responsible for enforcing all of this. And so for me personally, that's the only thing I have an issue with. I, I feel like there was a very specific reason why we did that, so that, that our employees have time to enforce our ordinance that we've imposed on them. And so now if we amend it, we're asking our own employees to, to change that. And, and that's completely up to you guys, but I, I just want to point out, those are the three things that are subject to discussion unless your motion stands. So.
I, I actually was going to, again, maybe I should just pull a motion because I might not be in agreement with the rest of the council, but what I was going to do was amend my motion to change the time to ten thirty for Thursday, leave everything else as it stated for time. That was the only issue of time was Thursday. I wanted to keep the hundred percent only because we're setting a precedent. It took us so long to get to the fifty percent, and we have a hundred percent already established with, with anybody else that uses the park. I believe with the Rotary, we have a hundred percent.
They pay a hundred percent.
And there's another event out there that we.
Wonder Lake Ski Team also.
Right, Wonder Lake Ski though, is that a hundred percent? So in my motion, I'd like to keep that as it stated in my original motion. And then again, no change to the beer service hours either.
Keep it as the, as our ordinance states or as they are requesting?
As our ordinance states.
So that would amend your motion to include our current times, correct?
To, so your motion would be to end the event?
Thursday night at ten thirty.
End it at ten thirty. Keep the one hundred percent and keep the times, they have to adhere to the times.
As well we've had in the past, right.
And Alderman Santee, that is your second. You're going to have to guide us through this here.
That's what I mean, if it's not in agreement with everyone else, you can let it die.
Seconding that motion, and I just, I just die on my second.
Right, we're back to his original motion.
Okay.
So you're not seconding that motion?
I'm not seconding that motion, no.
Is anyone going to second Alderman Schaefer's motion? Alderman Glad?
I'll second it.
Alderman Condon?
I just for clear, or a suggestion, a possible suggestion, could we vote on these issues separately?
If the motion's withdrawn.
Right, I understand that, but I just thought that might make it a cleaner.
Again, I'll look to Alderman Schaefer, it's your motion, whatever you want to do. You have a second, so whatever you want to do.
I'll just, I'd like to just move it forward and vote on it.
All right.
So is everyone clear on the motion, or should the city clerk give it a shot to read back? I just think it should be clear because you handle your seconds different than most towns do, and we all go along with it, so let's just make sure we know what's on the table.
Okay, the motion as it stands is for the event to be ended on Thursday at ten thirty PM. Everything else is to remain the same. There will be no change to the beer service. And the cost reimbursement will remain at a hundred percent.
For Thursday?
That is for Thursday, and that is Alderman Schaefer's motion, seconded by Alderman Glad. Any discussion of that motion? Alderman Condon?
Does it have to be on the motion or can refer just for clarification?
Go ahead.
Because I just wanted it to be cleared, and it will be, and I vote will be dependent on this, that I personally support the Thursday, closing at ten thirty, keeping the beer sales and times as established by the city council. But I would support fifty percent reimbursement. I think that from my, from my standpoint, that we're, we're keeping the times, I mean, they would like longer times. I think it is clear, I think we have that ordinance for a reason, and I, to uphold that. But, but I'd like to give them the fifty percent back because I do see such a tiny.
So I just checked with Attorney McCardle, so the motion on the floor stands. We vote on the motion. If the motion fails, it's the opportunities there to make another motion. Is everyone clear? Any questions?
Can we amend his motion?
It would probably be easier if we.
It'd be easier to vote it down.
To vote it.
I agree with that. In fact, we're on a second.
Alderman Peterson?
Are we still discussing his motion?
Yes.
Okay, one of, one of the reasons why I wanted to do fifty percent on Thursdays, I don't, this'll be the first time we've had a Thursday night. How do we know what the turnout's going to be? And we have the same amount of policemen out there, probably scheduled, and it's a small crowd.
We do a job, you're right, we do have the original amount out there. But as we've seen, if the crowd is smaller, we address it, we send people home. I don't, we still have to pay them a minimum for showing up, but yeah, there is, there is that potential they could have a bad showing and we're still, they're still paying our cost.
And then I would, I would address the chamber that if it turns out to be a great night, that maybe we consider, or they consider, the hundred percent the year after. But I'd like to see them get a little bit of a break at the first year on a Thursday night.
Any further questions on the motion on the floor?
So then are we going to give everyone a break from the Rotary to the Wonder Lake Ski Team on their first nights of their events?
If they're going to do Thursday?
No, any person.
Intriguing. I'm just talking about Thursday night.
Okay. Alderman Condon?
Just to address that, Alderman Schaefer, I think there's a big difference between some of those events and the chamber, and that does so much for the community. So I, I think that's why we have the ability to vote every, on every event and, and the different organizations. And I, not to say that the Rotary and the Ski Team haven't been great, that there hasn't been a great benefit to the community from them, I just think that's different than the chamber. My, my opinion.
And Alderman Glad?
Yeah, we're not here to basically weigh which service, you know, that one organization gives to the city versus the next. It's more of a precedent, and the thing is, is we shouldn't cross over that because we do set precedent. And if the chamber comes in and says, and requests that, are we going to go back and say to the Rotary that, gee, you know, we gave it to the chamber, but we're not going to give it to the Rotary because we don't think the Rotary gives as much to the community as.
I agree.
I think it's just a bad precedent. I think we should leave it at a hundred percent, and that's the way I feel.
Further discussion? Alderman Curry?
Just, just a comment on Alderman Glad's, I guess, and a couple of the others. We're not setting a precedent, we've already done it. That's the fifty percent that we're doing already for the weekend. So as far as I'm concerned, it's just extensive for that first weekend. So it's really not a precedent. If you take that to its end point, then we would have to back off and all. And I don't, I don't see us wanting to do that, so. So the motion on the table, I'm not going to support something because of that. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we vote that down and then we can get one that has fifty percent in it. Thank you.
Any further comments? Alderman Glad?
So I guess basically what we're saying is because of the fact that the rest of it's fifty percent, we should just go with that. Basically, if, if we go with fifty percent on this, then how do we not let the other organizations get away with the same thing? I think that's the, the issue, whatever we've agreed that in the past is the past, and what we're at right now is, is a hundred percent. That's where I just think we should keep it. I think Alderman Schaefer is correct on this one.
Further comments? Please call the roll. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
No.
Alderman Curry?
No.
Alderman Santee?
No.
Alderman Condon?
No.
Motion denied. I'll entertain another motion. Alderman Curry?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Fiestas Days event schedule with the, I would say, ten thirty closure on Thursday, and with beer sales times conforming to city ordinance, and a fifty percent reimbursement rate for the Thursday, the same as we have for those other days. And also to approve the special event liquor license and to approve the placement temporary sign as a protective of the event.
Thank you. Seconded by Alderman Condon. Just any discussion on the, the new motion? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
No.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. You know, anytime we get into new territory, it's our responsibility to look at it from our side as well as yours. I agree with what Alderman Condon says. I think we have a great partnership between the chamber and the city. I think any of our successes are yours, and any of your successes are also ours. So I wish you the best. I think that we, I hope that you leave here feeling like we gave this a very fair shake and, and talked it out to the best of our ability. So thank you very much for your patience with us.
Thank you.
And thank you for your very thought-provoking conversation because I think everybody's opinions were just, so majority rule. So we, we wish you well. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's statement reports. All I have this evening is, as 2016 comes to a close, to say to all of you, it's my privilege to serve our community alongside of all of you. I think that we are definitely here for the right reasons. We love our community and we're here to do our best for our residents. So I appreciate every one of you. It takes a lot of courage to run for public office, and I think that all of you represent your worth very well. So Merry Christmas to all of you and, and look forward to working with you for at least part of 2017. To our staff, you guys just do an incredible job all year long, day in, day out. We are very lucky to have such consummate professionals sitting in your seats. You, you just lead by example, and there's no better way to lead. So I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year also. To our guests here this evening, the same to you. Merry Christmas and a Happy 2017. Look forward to all working together for the common good of our community. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. The next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening?
We had a public works meeting and minutes from that should be forthcoming.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none. Any staff reports this evening?
Mayor, I'd just like to mention that Public Works again is partnering with Algen Recycling for our annual Christmas recycling, Christmas light recycling. Each year with Dennis' programs, we've collected more of our lights, and we are off and running to a great start. We have two drop-off sites here at the municipal center and at the Public Works facility at our normal business hours, Monday through Friday, and this runs through February twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other statement?
Just the only thing I wanted to say is, you know, looking back on this year, the number of projects, the things the council has approved to, you know, make this a better community and put their trust in staff. We started with the recreation center opening in February. I can't believe it's been almost a year that that's been open. We're over sixteen hundred members now in that facility. The police dispatch consolidation and, and the approval of moving forward with that project with the substantial build-out inside of this facility. The continued wastewater treatment plant project, really across the board in all departments. We have quite a lot of activities going on. And, and it all started with this council providing the direction and the input and approval for moving, and the trust in staff for moving those projects forward. So thank you for that on behalf of the staff and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any future agenda items this evening? Alderman Condon?
I wanted to throw something forward for future consideration, and originally this wasn't the timing. I thought I'd do it, and I think I'd do it next summer, but anyway. One of the things that I have noticed in the city, and I think the city tries really hard to get the word out to the community, but when, when you talk to people, to our residents, so often they don't understand and don't know the things that, that the city has accomplished and the things that the city is working on. And I realize we have our newsletter, we have our Facebook page, and there are, there are means, but are we reaching them the way they need to get the information? That said, I guess, and I know having reduced our, our levy, the last session, that this is probably not something possible, but I would certainly request that staff look into getting a part-time social media expert involved so that we can reach the community in the ways that they hear and get information. Because I think we do have a great staff, and, and our staff, we, from, you know, and look through from our police department, our public works, our community development, our parks, and all the activities, including the things the chamber does that we partner with. I don't think the community is fully aware of all the things that we do do. And I think that's important, so that's something I would like to request that we look into.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, it's not really an agenda item, but I have forgotten a couple of meetings to mention. Some time ago, we had a proposal come before us concerning a development on Flanders Road that we issued a unanimously issued a resolution against to the County Board. And I don't know if all Aldermen are aware of what happened there. Director Martin and I attended the zoning board of appeals meeting on that, it was in October, I believe. And at that meeting, it was discussed and voted on and it went to the County Board with, not a recommendation from ZBAA, which then automatically triggered that 18 vote need from the county, as did our resolution. So I did, then it did go to the County Board meeting on November 15th, prepared to basically then state the city's position, only to find out that according to County Board rules, public comment had the zoning issues, so I did not have the opportunity to speak. And that motion to approve that zoning change actually passed on a 21 to 1 vote with two absences, unfortunately. So I did, I again went to the County Board meeting today because they're discussing new rules. And so I did kind of put forth the case for moving that public comment period so that when issues like that come up that are important, that they can hear from. Because it's the only time the County Board is all together where they can hear from, from the public on those issues. Just wanted to let Council know that that did pass through, so we will have that multifamily zoning has been approved in that area, which unfortunately could mean that somewhere down the road, we might see another zoning request change there in that area.
Thank you. Thanks for filling us in and also thanks for going there again today to make, thanks, that's, thank you. Any other future agenda items? Alderman Glab?
All I wanted to state was the fact that, you know, I think the city does quite a bit of getting the word out as much as they can of what we do here. I know there's a lot of residents that watch YouTube now that they know that it's there. And again, I've always been amazed at how many people actually watch these meetings as far as looking to get someone. I think that if I heard it right, that we get somebody, have staff start looking for somebody to add to the media as far as getting us out, I think that's something that should probably go to Personnel and Finance as far as the committee for their budgets or whatever, rather than having staff run around looking for somebody now on that.
I think that's what Alderman Condon was suggesting, was that it just be.
Yeah, my, my feeling on the whole thing is, is I think we do quite a bit of a good job now compared to what we did several years back when we kind of lost Comcast and used to say the Herald has covered us less and less. And I think to some extent, in, in most cases, it's whether you care to know or you don't whether, you know, in most cases that, that people either do know what's going on or don't.
I do think Alderman Condon is correct though in saying that the way people get information has certainly changed. I mean, you know, I, I think social media is the number one way people get their information now as opposed to years ago when it was in the Herald or, you know, whatever. It's, people want that instant answer and.
In some cases it's good, in some cases it isn't.
I agree.
It all depends on what they're, what information they're actually getting.
I agree.
So.
Any other future, thank you. Any other future agenda items? See none? What comes a motion to adjourn? Alderman Curry?
I'll adjourn.
Seconded by Alderman Santee?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.